All to order, roll call please.
Mayor Garance.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Will.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Strahan.
Excused.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of urgency nature, requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes.
Mayor, council. Nick Angelo, 156 Greland Heights Road. Two things. One is the artwork, right, Julie? The artwork? Bring that up about the Eagle Prairie Arts District established or had High Rock Conservation Camp make four, I believe, art displays that are about four feet wide, five feet tall or so, plexiglass or sealed interior, looked really, really good. Number one, the High Rock Crew is looking for projects to do. So if we need any projects that need to be done, signs updated, they would appreciate the work. Number two, we had a bit of a conversation with staff. We're talking about places to display them informal after the last council meeting or the council meeting before last. Doesn't look like they should probably go in the medium because it's an obstruction of view, but other places in town would be a good place to put these things. They're absolutely gorgeous, so... And the art would be switched out on a timely basis. Museum stuff is usually switched out every six months, but that's up to the Arts District. So the question would be, can you put it before the, what do they call it? Sculpture Committee, I suppose, would be the group to do it. Secondly, the light posts. I lie three things. The light post, I think it might be more effective to have the chamber just get the installation done and then, as per council's direction, either dedicate it or not dedicate it. Of course, we do it to standard. We do all the permitting, et cetera, through the city, but we take care of the burden. In that sense, I was wondering if you could agendize a dedication of funds for the Christmas ornaments or some way that, I think last year we were talking, 2,000, 2,500 came to the chamber. Well, this year it's gonna, it would probably be double that to take care of this. I've got a pretty good idea. I don't have the exact numbers yet. I've had pulling in favors with the engineering, professional engineer doing the design for the concrete and rebar hole, in the hole. And I'm then going to have a professional electrician install the pole itself with the capabilities, license the whole nine yards. Again, put the drawings and plans through the city, get approval, put the pole in. And then it would be up to the council, I suppose, to decide whether or not they took responsibility of that or left it in the responsibility of the chamber, or I'd talk with Kevin at Creations and see if he wanted to take the responsibility. Don't know how that would all work out in the end, but if you could agendize the funds for, in the amount of $5,000, to support the Christmas display this year, that would be fantastic. I'd appreciate it. And last one, real quick, is please start negotiating with the county on the wind power project, all right, for the test, revenue sharing program. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, I know that we're not supposed to have a dialogue with participants, but Nick, you might look at, as far as the foundation for the light posts. Those are standard plans in Caltrans documents and no engineering is required. It's all been engineered.
Gotcha. Understood.
So it might save you a nickel or a dime.
The electrician won't move forward without approved engineering plans, so I will...
They are pre-approved.
I will get the Caltrans guy to, or the engineer person to take a look at that. Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sean McLaughlin. I'm Executive Director for Access Humboldt, and I thought I should come down and just thank you for televising and recording your meetings. I hope you're getting some good feedback, and I know it requires some adjustments technically. And I particularly want to thank your city manager for working with our crew and for being so easy to work with, and the whole team here, because we know in smaller jurisdictions, everybody has to pull together to make things work. I wanted to just take three minutes or less to brief you on three significant projects that we're doing. The first one Kyle is well aware of, along with the other cities and the counties. Access Humboldt audited Altice, Suddenlink, on your behalf, their payments to your jurisdictions, their performance under the franchise obligations of the contract. We, I would be very happy to give you a much more elaborate report back on that audit. It's somewhat complex, but it found overall across the county over $50,000 of underpayments by Altice and Sudden, the parent company of Suddenlink, but it's very difficult to collect, so we're working with a consulting agent, a firm called the Busky Group out of Sacramento to try to negotiate a settlement with Altice on that, on those findings.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, the step that we're at now is they have offered to come back and meet with the jurisdictions here. The last time they offered, they canceled at the last minute and the meeting didn't happen, so we're hoping that they will come perhaps in October to meet with the local jurisdictions. Or we gave them the alternative to meet with myself and the consultant in Sacramento and actually meet with them there. Turns out Altice has very little, few holdings in California, and so they're, they're not traveling around the area. The management is all out of the state. We're dealing with folks in New York to make decisions about Altice here. But that's ongoing work that we do with you folks in addition to delivering media services and operating channels and a media center and airing anything that your constituents want aired or that you want aired. I think that that franchise oversight and holding accountable the licensees here, the franchisees in the region. So that's what's happening there. The second thing that you may hear about if you're talking to other elected officials or city managers around the state or around the country is the Federal Communications Commission recently adopted an order, which has been published in the Federal Register, will take effect September 26th technically, that really eviscerates local jurisdictions in their contracts with the cable company. The simplest way to describe it is your franchise agreement with the cable company includes basically a social contract and an agreement. They pay your jurisdiction a certain amount of money as their franchise fee. They fund the access operation. They also do non-cash obligations as part of this agreement. They set aside channels and network connections. They provide free drops and other services. What the FCC instructed is going forward that the companies shall put a value on the in-kind services and discount that value from the cash payments to the jurisdictions. So as you can imagine, cities across the country are going ballistic on this. It will be litigated. We already know it's going to be appealed in the Ninth Circuit, which is a good thing for cities in terms of selecting what circuit court you want to have your appeal in. But that's an ongoing activity. I wanted you to be aware, in case you're hearing from colleagues, that, hey, what are you guys doing about that? The big picture is California will not be the front line of the rollout of this. Because we have state franchising, it's much more complicated for the companies to implement the FCC order in California and much more risky. It's much more likely to end up in court and not in their favor. So we don't anticipate any immediate actions in California and Humboldt County in particular. We have a settlement agreement that protects some of the things that we get. So we're like two layers behind the front edge, but people around the country are going to be freaking out, like Massachusetts is gonna, there are some states that are going to really feel it badly. So we're tracking that, and it's a very threatening development. It indicates that the FCC really does not value or support community media, so it's a reminder that we sort of have an ongoing struggle and that we need local jurisdictions to support us both in policy and in your advocacy work at the state level and the federal level. So the third item I wanted to leave you with is a happier note, and that is with the changes going on and this realization that the media landscape is changing, our community is changing, so this notion of community media, what does a community media provider do, is changing so fast. So Access Humboldt is doing a real top-to-bottom revisioning and strategic planning process, and we found this amazing partner. If you're not familiar with the organization, it has Humboldt County roots. It's called Internews. Internews is a NGO, a non-government organization that mostly works around the world. For the last 30 years, they have been developing media solutions for South Sudan, a radio network for South Sudan, or a text news service for a village in Afghanistan. And they've been doing this work out in the world where it's very difficult to help communities get a voice, and about five years ago, they started looking at the situation in the United States. They said, you know, there's a big decline in local media. The local journalism is going down, media's consolidating, so they started doing projects in the U.S. Just so happens, they have an office in Arcata with 30 employees there, and so they chose Humboldt County as an area to invest some of their resources to help our community really figure this out. They have this project called Listening Post Collective, which is a series of outreach and listening efforts to sort of engage parts of the community that are underheard, that we don't really hear from, through traditional media or commercial media. And so we'll be role, we just completed Eureka, for the city of Eureka, an information ecosystem assessment. It's a fascinating 30-page report that I'll be happy to share with you. Since most of Humboldt County's media outlets are in Eureka, it gives you a pretty immediate brush of what's happening in Humboldt County. Of course, with KHSU closing down, with the Time Standard laying off reporters, with our TV broadcast stations being owned by Sinclair, you know, we have seen lots of concern and issues in our community about where is our information going in the future? Are we going to have local information? Are we going to have local news? So that's a project we're taking in a very constructive way and saying, you know what? We're not waiting for it all to collapse. We're going to engage now and start this planning effort. So we have Internews as a partner. We're working very closely with the county libraries, and I could easily imagine a very exciting project here in Riedel with the library giving your community more of a voice in the overall county, because I think clearly Riedel is one of those communities that is underrepresented in terms of our county information ecosystem. So those are three big projects we're doing. I could talk about any of them all day and bore the heck out of you, or if you're interested, I will give you my time freely anytime. I'm happy to talk more, but thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this really good information. We appreciate it.
Aloha. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, well, I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor Garance.
Yes.
Staff, would I could just remove item number two from the consent calendar?
Akey dokie. And is there any other item that anyone would like to remove? Anyone from the public would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Then I will ask for a motion to approve items one and three.
So move.
Second.
And have a vote. Motion carries for zero. Now we will move on to this community, I'm sorry, staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, and members of the council. The staff report is on page 14 of your report. And at our last city council meeting, it was requested that staff pull information on historical accidents on Wildwood Avenue, on the northbound 101 on-ramp or adjacent to the 101 on-ramp. Chief Connor did do a search on the police department's records and did not find a reported accident at this particular location over the last five years. So I believe staff did send the council an email on that subject, but I just wanted to report that out in an open session. Our budget book is nearing completion. As you know, we're working with the interim finance director and we're kind of retooling the budget book, and I'm really excited about the end product. I think it's an improvement over our prior budget, and we're expecting hopefully to release that by the beginning of next week. So we have basically a final copy. We're just trying to figure out the best and most economical way to print that particular book for distribution to the council. Staff's also developed and issued a bid for some asphalt work and manhole repair work on Bellevue Avenue, so that's up on the website, and we should be returning to the council at your first October meeting to get final approval for that project and move that one forward before the rainy season. And we just yesterday met with Caltrans to discuss not just Humboldt-Riedel Business Park and the interface of the 101 there, but also Caltrans has some projects that are going on both north and south of town on the bridges, Eagle Prairie Bridge and then the, I believe it's called the Muffet Bridge, just north of town, and actually both bridges. So we had a good, long meeting that was, we were joined by Marcel Clem from HCO for that particular meeting with multiple Caltrans representatives. We received a letter from the North Coast Water Quality Control Board finally closing out one of our administrative civil liability orders from the water board. When the wastewater plant first went online, the operator had a little bit of difficulty fine tuning the plant, and so it did have some technical violations at that point in time, but they were all during high rain events. So it wasn't as though they were, you know, folks were using the river. It was during major storm events. Since then, we have installed new equipment on the wastewater plant and brought it up to the modern code that Arrow Mod and similar facilities are using for that. So we did receive a release from that liability complaint. That was kind of a fairly good-sized project over the last couple of years that staff has been working on. And then I did attend CDBG training back on August 28th with finance staff to go over the application process for this year. They are definitely changing a lot at the state level, and I think, though, it's going to lead to better outcomes for the program. Unfortunately, one of the things that sticks out in my mind was their listing of their ability to deliver CDBG projects. Out of the 50 states in the United States plus Puerto Rico, that California had ranked 51st, in other words, dead last in terms of delivering projects. So CDBG is a difficult program, but they are working on improving it, and we definitely see the path towards really gearing up the CDBG program to something that's more attainable for a city like Riedel to be competitive for. So I think that's good news in the long run. With that, unless there's any other questions from the council, I'll return it to the mayor.
Any questions?
A comment, Mayor Garance. Probably eight or 10 years ago, when I was out jogging, I was up by Bellevue in the northbound on-ramp on the Highway 101, and Caltrans Maintenance Department was there assessing some damage, and Dave Chang, who has since retired and lives upon Monument, was there, and I chatted with him, and his comment, as New York can remember it, was historically single-car property damage-only accidents where people come around the corner going northbound or and turn onto the northbound on-ramp, going way too fast, and they smack into the guardrail. And according to Dave, as, you know, during his time in the maintenance engineering department, he overseen, you know, three or four different contracts to do repair due to that single cause. So a little bit more history.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Also, thank you for you and Chief Connor for gathering that information. However, I just wanted to mention that this morning, there was a fellow, I go to work about Saturday when I drive through there, and he had to, I have the right of way, he didn't, and he, it appeared to kind of wave to me and acknowledge that. So, because he had, his intent was to go on through, and he had to stop because I was coming through there. So it is still major, fortunately, we haven't had that accident. I just am concerned as time goes on.
Thank you. Thank you. And, okay, and I just wanted to point out the dedication of the water line over north of the bridge. It might come up at a later time, but it's a tremendous thing that happened in the city. The stakeholders, basically Glenn White's group, put in the water line over there where there was none, that would cost the city a tremendous amount of money that we weren't able to do, and he did it, and then it was dedicated to the city. We received it, we signed the acceptance, and that's a major thing that we need to acknowledge, I feel anyway, that we need to acknowledge that if nothing else has come out of the business park, that is a tremendous thing that has come out of it already, and I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of it, we acknowledged it, and we are grateful for it, and hopefully bigger and better things will come out of that business park. Good things are happening, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. And with that, is there any questions from the public on the staff report? Okay, then we will move on to special presentations. Presentation from Craig Tucker on the Powder Valley Project. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, members of the council, appreciate you guys having me down. My name is Craig Tucker, and I'm a consultant providing some policy support to Humboldt County as it navigates the future of the Powder Valley Project. So I was down here a few months ago, and I think I'll give you a little bit of review. It won't be a test, but a little bit of review on things I showed you last time, but just kind of bring you up to the current time in terms of what's going on with this project. So you guys are down here in Riedel are intimately familiar with the geography and the project and the river, and I think you guys know what kind of asset this river is and has been for this community. But the Powder Valley Project basically makes the Eel River a major tributary of the North Fork of the Russian by virtue of diverting a significant amount of water from the Van Arsdale Dam across the mountain over to the North Fork of the Russian. Just a little bit of review on the project. There are two dams in the project. The smaller, lower dam was built first. It was built in 1908, and it really did have, the primary purpose of this dam was to pump water over the hill to create head to run a power turbine. And so this was really first and foremost a power project, but that water, once it got over into the North Fork of the Russian, provided for irrigation water and domestic water use for folks over there. And they were so pleased with having this diversion, they didn't want to just have this one smaller dam that could provide a diversion in the wintertime. So a few years later, they went and built Scott Dam, which creates Pillsbury Reservoir or Lake Pillsbury. It is a much bigger structure, and it's able to store enough water that, you know, Scott Dam will release water down to Cape Horn year-round and allow for a year-round diversion the way things are currently configured. I will point out that both of these reservoirs are slowly but surely silting in. So Scott Dam was built to store somewhere around 94,000 acre-feet of water. Today, it can only store about 66,000 acre-feet of water, and sort of, I can't, and I'm not sure what the current capacity of Cape Horn is, but it's nowhere near the 700 acre-feet that it was designed. So just a little bit of history on this project. It was built between 1905 and 1922, but there were really no, you know, and this is the story of dams and rivers all over California. It took a long time for people to say, well, wait a minute, what about the fish? So it really wasn't until 1979 that there were rules about how much water they had to leave in the Eel River below these dams. And it was really in about, in the mid-2000s that because of the collapse of the fishery, there are pretty stringent rules placed on the project about releasing water particularly in the spring and summer and fall months. So PG&E, any power, any privately-owned power company has to get a license from the feds to operate a dam, or any power project for that matter, and these licenses can last 30 to 50 years. And so the license to operate, this project expires in 2022, and it takes years to go through the process to get a new license. So originally PG&E initiated this process. They worked with stakeholders, they wrote a license application, started getting input from everybody. And Congressman Huffman took the, what I think is a bit of extraordinary step, fantastic, that he has the interest here in the Eel and Russian River basins, but he convened stakeholders from the agricultural community, fishing community, environmental groups, the water agencies, the counties to come together and say, well, is there an outcome here for this project being relicensed that really meets the needs of both? Is there a win-win situation here for both the Eel River Valley and the Russian River Valley? And so we kind of devised what we call this two-basin solution, which I can talk a little bit more about. But kind of in the middle of this, and I think this is maybe about where I was or where the process was when I talked to you guys late last year, PG&E is like, all right, we're not going to relicense it, we're going to sell it. And so they tried to use this auction process to sell this project, and apparently there was very little interest in buying the project, and I think that speaks a little bit to the liabilities and the finances and the poor power production of the project. And so as everybody was scrambling to figure out how to, like, what do we do if they auction it off? Should we be buying it? What to do? PG&E then turned around and said, well, we're not going to sell it. In fact, we're not going to relicense it. In fact, if somebody wants it, we're going to orphan this project. And so orphaning the project, it's a set of rules and the FERC regulations, and they can basically put the keys on the table and see if anybody is competent enough to pick them up and drive the car away. And so this, again, all the stakeholders, Humboldt County, Sonoma County, everybody at the table, had to kind of scramble to figure out what to do. So we basically formed this new coalition, and so Humboldt County, the Sonoma County Water Agency, the Mendocino Inland Water Power Commission, the Round Valley Tribe, and California Trout, we have amongst, among those parties amongst themselves negotiated what we call a planning agreement. And basically, those parties, I think I've got the slide here. Skip that. Let me get my head on, I'll come back to that planning agreement, kind of want to finish. I don't think I have to tell you guys that the PVP for, since 1905, has really provided a lot of benefit to the Russian River side, but really at the expense of those of us on this side. So it's, the Eel River Valley's water is headed over there. Eel River Valley fish have been blocked from reaching traditional spawning habitats. The water quality on the Eel... been blocked from reaching traditional spawning habitats, the water quality on the Eel has been negatively impacted. So, I would describe the project, I think I described it as, just one is bad relationships where one person gets all the benefit and the other person has to do all the work. And just to talk a little bit about how it's changed over time, the amount of water they can divert has gone down significantly as the federal agencies have prescribed operational rules in an attempt to protect fish. And if you divert less water, you generate less electricity. So, back in the day, they could generate 53,000 megawatt-hours of electricity, currently, they generate about 19,000 or 20,000 hours. So, it's a pretty significant reduction in what they can do based on a reduction in how much water they can divert. All this makes the project less valuable to the owner. This is a picture of Van Arsdale at high water, Van Ar, the fish ladder at Van Arsdale silt in with gravel every year at high water. So, not only is there no fish passage beyond Scott Dam, for many parts of the year, there's no fish passage at Van Arsdale either. So, this is just Huffman creates this two-basin solution process with co-equal goals. So, I was describing that Huffman is looking for this win-win situation where we improve fisheries conditions on the Eel, but at the same time, we address the water needs and water supply reliability of folks on the Russian River side. So, one thing I want to, I think is really important to point out to folks in the Eel River Valley and folks here in Rio Del, is what do the dams really mean for flows in the Eel River? Like, when you look out here, how much of that water, the flow you're looking at is a consequence of dam operations. And what I'll tell you is since the biological opinion that got prescribed in the mid 2000s, the releases from Cape Horn Dam are roughly the natural hydrograph. So, what we're seeing, whether the dams are in place or not in place, that's pretty much what you would see out your back door here in Rio Del. There are some, I don't think I have a pointer, but there are some spikes that we lose, so this, this blue line is the natural hydrograph, and the red line is what actually we're seeing. And so, you lose some high-water events in the wintertime because the dams capture that water, but the releases from Cape Horn, they force them to mimic the natural hydrograph. And so, most of the water that is, it's stored during high-water events in the winter, and then slowly piped over across the mountain throughout the year. So, I just think that's an important point to make. So, I just want to skip down. So, so PG&E in the middle of all this decides, hey, we're going to, we're going to give this thing up, we don't want it. And I think it really speaks to the fact that the project is really not an asset, it's a liability for PG&E. And so, what does that mean? Well, the party, so the FERC rules and regs say if, if an owner tries to orphan a project, someone can step forth and say, we want it, but you have to demonstrate to the FERC that you've got the expertise to take it over and operate it, you've got the capital necessary to do the operations and maintenance, and usually relicensing a dam means there's a lot of upgrades you have to do to comply with modern environmental laws. And so, someone has to demonstrate that capacity to FERC. So, what Humboldt County, Mendocino Inland Water Power, Sonoma County Water Agency, Round Valley Tribe, and Cal Trout, this five-party coalition, they have written FERC and said, look, we're giving you, we're giving FERC notice that we are going to try to put together a license application for this project. We don't want to manage it ourselves, but we're going to create a new regional entity that would take over and operate the project. Which I think is a very ambitious goal, but it's sort of in this spirit of trying to find an outcome here that's good for the fish on this side and good for water users on the other side. So, that's really where things are. So, FERC accepted that notice of intent and said, you guys go for it, but we have to have a new license application in April of 2022. So, what the five-party group is doing now is hiring a team of consultants to put together a feasibility study. So, is it possible to do this thing? Is it possible to form a new regional entity that can sell water, that can sell electricity, that can manage this project and invest the capital to upgrade the project? The meeting, the help the fish portion of the two-basin solution may mean removing some of the project. So, there's been conversation and some analysis about can we remove Scott Dam but still divert water in the wintertime from Van Arsdale? That would do a lot to help fish, but maintain a water supply going to the other side of the hill. All those scenarios are to be, to be studied. And I would say that I don't feel like I can really predict clearly the outcome here, but I can tell you that the way this project has been operated in the past is not how it will be in the future. So, just making this project comply with Endangered Species Act and the Clean Water Act is going to take a lot of upgrades. A good portion of the diversion tunnel is wooden, so someone's going to have to invest a lot of capital in fixing that and bringing it up to snuff for the long term. But the idea is that sometime next year, these parties would introduce legislation that would create this new regional entity. We will have these feasibility studies complete in next spring, and then we would start talking to agencies for, and what we have to do for ESA compliance. And then we'd have a license application put together by 2022. Now, all of this stuff will be done within the, I think in the backdrop of this, is Huffman's ad hoc coalition. So, you've got these five parties that have stepped out to do this work, but I think what we're doing is going to take political support from everybody in the region. So, we're going, everybody's going to have to be bought into whatever this solution is at the end of the day. So, I expect Congressman Huffman to continue to have these ad hoc meetings that would be much bigger than just these five parties, because I just, I don't think that, you know, these five parties can pull this off by themselves. It's going to take a lot of local support on both sides of the mountain to make this happen. But that's kind of where things stand. I can answer questions to the best of my ability, and I would say, as these, when this feasibility study is completed, I expect it to have, I expect there to be like a matrix of, well, if we removed Scott Dam and we sold water for this amount of money, this is how, you know, there'll be like this chart that kind of help us understand, like financially how this works, and biologically how this works, and then how it works from a water storage perspective. And so, I think there's just a lot of homework yet to be done to see if, you know, we can make this work and it'd be a real economically viable endeavor. So, I'll stop right there and see if you, I think I threw a lot at you, but I'll stop there and see if you guys have questions.
I mean, it seems like it's early enough. I know the county supervisor, Fennell, talked about it at RCEA, but isn't the fish issue really the biggest, one of the biggest issues you have?
For Humboldt County's perspective, I think that's the big, that's the big issue here. You know, the salmon runs here are maybe 1% of what, of the historic abundance, some are still here, are likely to be ESA listed. The, you know, dams aren't the only reason for that, there's a lot of reasons for that, not the least of which is the invasive pike minnow. But Lake Pillsbury is kind of like a breeding ground for these pike minnow. And the habitat upstream of Pillsbury is steeper and colder, which is what salmon like, what pike minnow don't like. So, it's, there's a few benefits to the, so I just told you that the dams really don't create a lot of flow problems, at least below Van Arsdale, so what is the problem? Well, there's that salmon spawning and rearing habitat up there, there's habitat that pike minnow can't use, that salmon can, and there's a lot of water quality bits to it. But I can say that, I mean, if you look at Humboldt County's resolution, I thought it spoke very strongly towards water quality and fisheries as being Humboldt County's fundamental interest in it.
Thank you.
If the siltation of the reservoir there at Scott Dam is extensive, as you said, it looks to me like there'd be about 40 million cubic yards of material backed up there. And, you know, to get rid of that, you know, we're talking a half a billion dollars. Where does, where does that kind of money come from?
So, I think this is part of the homework exercise. I think, you know, there's two alternatives. You can move sediment, or one of the things that we're doing on the Klamath is we designed the drawdown of the reservoirs to leave as much sediment in place as possible, and you come back with a revegetation plan on top of it, so you hold as much sediment in place as what's tenable. I think the makeup of the sediment is really different over here than is on the Klamath side, but I, I think no, I think question, I think there's two big questions, is the volume of the sediment and then what kind of turbidity issues it creates in the river? And two, is there an issue with toxicity, or is there toxins in the sediment? So, those are the two key questions, and I think the answers to those questions will be the fundamental driver of the economic viability of whatever we try to do.
Do, do they, do they plan on sampling that, let's call it mud?
PG&E has been less than cooperative, but California, it's not the coastal, the Coastal Conservancy is funding a study to go in and drill core samples to analyze the sediment to see if there's toxicity issues. I mean, if the sediment is full of mercury, the price tag changes immediately.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Dr. Donner.
I'm not sure if I can explain what I mean. Is somebody else, well, we're looking at two, the two basins, is there somebody else out there that's also looking at, I mean, we're looking at this, it may be feasible, it may not be feasible, is there some other group out there looking at the same things that we might be competing against at some point?
Well, I think that's one of the advantages or benefits of this whole thing being convened by Congressman Huffman, is I think he's kind of forcing Sonoma County, Mendocino County interest, and Humboldt interest to try to get on the same page. And so, you know, looking at, well, can we remove one of the two dams for fish while maintaining some level of diversion over there since Sonoma County conserves water customers? So, I think he's kind of, you're trying to find that sweet spot where, you know, not everybody gets everything they want, but everybody gets things that they need. So, I think that's really the spirit of this two-basin solution process, and to have a seat at the table, you have to kind of demonstrate that you're open-minded enough to consider these things.
Thank you.
Yes, my question is just, you talked about the, if they, PG&E orphans. If PG&E orphans the project, and that, it means basically you're putting the keys on the table and waiting for someone with, so let's say, no one wants to pick up the car keys. What happens in that instance if they say, we're, we're going to orphan this, and it's going to literally be an orphan? What happens?
So, the likely outcome is that FERC would order PG&E to decommission the entire project.
And then what would happen to the rivers?
So, a decommissioning order, in some ways, looks a lot like a relicensing process. So, it kind of starts all over, but instead of drafting a plan to operate the dams, they'll have to draft a plan to remove the project, they'll have to go through NEPA and CEQA and five years of meetings and yay, yay. But this has happened before in California, where PG&E has orphaned projects, and they've been decommissioned as a result. So, you know, the fact of the matter is, infrastructure has a lifespan. And I used to work with a colleague, he used to say, the Lord eventually calls all the dams home. And dams fill up with sediment, concrete, and steel don't last forever, wooden diversion tunnels certainly don't last forever. And I think of it as having that old Ford Pinto that doesn't pass the smog test, and you just have to decide, are you going to invest in this car? Are you going to get rid of it and find some other way to get around? And I think power companies have to ask that question of themselves whenever a dam's up for relicensing.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to ask a question? No? Okay. Get, get, mm-hmm.
Mayor Garza, members of the council, council. On page 29 of the packet, the title of the slide is diversion has little impact on the Eel River flows below the dams. I do think that's an important, you know, point to, to just reiterate that there may be some members of the community who are, you know, staunchly adamant that the diversion needs to end immediately and that that would cure all the ills of the river, but I don't know if Craig could talk a little bit more about that, about maybe there are other complicating factors?
Yeah, I would just, I would say the, I love the Eel River, it's a really fascinating watershed, but it cranks out somewhere around six and a half million acre-feet of water every year. So, they're diverting 60,000 acre-feet of water, so it's really, relative to the whole, it's really small, but the timing is important, timing is everything. So, the dams really don't affect, because of the regulations that are placed upon the operator, doesn't really affect the flows down here, but you have, by some estimates, 150 or 200 miles of salmon spawning and rearing habitat that fish can't get to. Sediment transport's really important, the way gravel moves down a river, the way river channels meander, all of these are really important features for fish health, for rivers to function properly. So, the dams hold that back. When they hold back water, they create what's called a thermal lag. So, in a big reservoir, it gets cold in the winter, and it warms up slowly in the spring. So, in the spring, the water's typically colder than it normally would be. But then by the peak of summer, the reservoir is really warm, but when winter comes, it cools off very slowly because it's so big. So, in the fall, water is usually warmer than it should be. So, dams create a lot of problems for fish that is not necessarily about the flow. And I just think sometimes that gets lost, and I think it's really easy to tell the public that those grape growers are stealing our water, but it's, the reality, it's a bit more complicated than that.
Certainly, I don't think there's, you know, you know, a catastrophic impact to the city's water supply, our main infiltration gallery is out of the, you know, the Eel River, so no matter what decision is made, I don't think there's, at this point in time, any evidence to show that there's, you know, a huge catastrophic impact to the city's water supply.
Yeah, and I would just say, you've guys got a good, you're lucky to have a city manager like Kyle, I think it was much appreciated that you came to the Eel Russian River Commission meeting, kind of representing. I think we can get swamped by the business interests in Sonoma and Mendocino, and so I think Humboldt has to, we have to be a squeaky wheel sometimes, but being able to demonstrate that our municipalities are engaged and interested is really important, so we appreciate that.
I can't remember where I saw it, but it seems like within the last week or two, there was some stuff about the Eel River watershed actually improving, there were some studies in the last year or so, they're noticing an improvement in it. I'm not sure what their reasoning is, I think it's part of the cannabis, the illegal grows, there's less of them, and there's things going on that are, it's actually approving watershed sake. Just like Mad River, there was a lot of concern about how much water was going to, was at the, at the dam, and if that, if that got cut off, when they were talking about this big pipeline, versus how much water actually comes from the watershed coming down to the main mouth of the Mad River. So, the watershed supplies a big portion of the water versus what the, what the dams are doing.
Well, and I would say that, I always say that fish is the product of a binomial equation, so it's not just the water, you have to have habitat. And so, there's a lot of habitat restoration projects that folks like California Trout and other organizations are doing, and all that's incredibly important. So, it's a flow piece and habitat piece, and I'm hoping, you know, 2014, 2015 are some of the worst water years, maybe in the last millennia for California. So, maybe, you know, maybe we won't have to see those kinds of years again in the immediate future. I mean, our salmon definitely needs some robust water years, so I was glad it was raining and I was driving down here.
Thank you very much. It was very informative, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to unmet transit needs, public hearing. City manager. Ron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Consuelo Espinosa, and I'm with the Humboldt Transit Authority, also a member of the- Also a member of the Social Services Technical Advisory Committee through HCOG, and I'm here to receive any comments for the public unmet needs process. And the public unmet needs process begins now, and it's open through November 15th. Comments can be made to the Humboldt County Association of Governments. They're located at 611 I Street in Eureka, or, you know, by telephone and email. So if there's any public unmet needs, this is a good time to bring to my attention.
I had a question. I, I think it answers itself in the text, but you're primarily the transit needs that were, that, that's talking on this page, 49 with the yellow header there, unmet transit need definitions. What's, what's allowable and what's reasonable to meet criteria to be, and it talks about things that you can't do. My question is, is there, is there a way that we can get some transit money? We were doing the library, we're upgrading that to be handicapped accessible. But one of the burdens that was placed on the city is we have to make it handicap accessible from the nearest bus stop, which is probably...
The path of travel.
Path of travel.
So the walkway path of travel and ADI accessibility.
For, yeah, for them to get to the library. So the library's gonna remain where it is, they've done work there, but the closest, I guess, bus stop is over here across the street, right across from us. Is there, and is there any way that we can get anything for that, or is that disqualified in the process?
I could submit your comment to the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and we can get back to you.
That's my, that's my only question.
Very good question.
Very good question. Are there any other comments or questions?
Anyone in the public, would you like to ask a question or make a comment on unmet public transportation needs?
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Very good question. And what is the cutoff date, I'm sorry, November 15th? Thank you.
Any comments after November 15th may still be submitted, but they'll just be added to the next cycle, which will be next year.
Okay, thank you. And now we are on to council reports and communications.
I went to HWMA last Thursday, and one of the, one of the things that was covered, kind of seemed like an off-the-wall topic, but it was requested by, actually Supervisor Bone, that when they closed the Cummings landfill, apparently the rumor of the, of the community was that there was 60 to 80 years more storage space in that landfill if it was, if it was expanded. And so he asked the HWMA, or HWMA staff to get us, to do a study and find out how much storage space in there. And that is, and that's, the reason he's asking that is people come and say, we're taking our garbage out of Humboldt County. Roughly eight or nine of these, of the big chip trailers go out a day, and they head up Highway 199 over to, they call Dry Creek up in Oregon, which is a really efficient, functioning landfill. And so at the end of the day, when they got through doing all this study and what, they'd have to get roads they don't have, by the way, to the Cummings, people down there really don't like the idea of garbage trucks coming in and out of the place. They would have six to seven years worth of filling that they could, they could actually dump. And at the end of that time, there would be a 30-year responsibility of HWMA to watch over that, just like they're doing Cummings and they're doing Table Bluff. And so after listening to what they did in their study and approaching that, and they went, they went through what had been studied years ago about places in Humboldt County to have landfills. And the most viable three places, they came up in 1994, they found an information that somebody was gonna throw out, they gave to, to Jill, that three, two of those border the headwaters, and where the third one was, they're all in the same area. So they're not, they're not viable places that you would ever put a landfill. So that was, their hope was that this, through this discussion, that this idea, you know, I don't know if you know those people, they're saying, why don't we have a landfill, reopen our landfills? It's, it's not a viable avenue where you also have a, more of a regional idea of having landfills. The garbage, the garbage problem is, is huge in, in a society. That's one of the four things that make your society work, is you have to have a place. If you just look at that many chip trailers a day, it doesn't take very long before you're, you're facing a real garbage problem. The, the answer is how you, how we as a society change our lifestyle. We have, we have to start, and they're doing education to that. We have to, we have to change how we deal with our waste, recyclable or non-recyclable, whatever. We have to change that because you just can't keep filling it in. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Last Wednesday, the 11th, I attended a last chance grade stakeholders meeting in Crescent City. And just kind of like the highlights, the state California Transportation Commission has authorized $50 million to bring the project through the environmental approval stage. And that's a lot of money, but there's a phenomenal amount of work that has to be done in order to try to avoid litigation down the road. Caltrans is working on a, a contract for engineering services to help with the preparation, the, all the background studies and the preparation of that environmental document. And they're looking at, the scope of the project indicates that it, the value will be $30 million. So there's gonna be a lot of, you know, engineering firms, heavy hitters, people like Bechtel Corporation that work worldwide are gonna be, those are the types of people that are gonna be bidding on, on a project like this, or submitting their qualifications for consideration. The current, has anybody driven up to Crescent City in the last couple of months? No? No? Okay. Well, there's a, the, the road has moved, center, the center line of the road has moved 50-plus feet towards the ocean since it was built in 1937. Okay? And it's dropped down, you know, a lot. The current contract, emergency contract that Caltrans has, about a $10 million value. They are driving piles on the ocean side and trying to reinforce it and strengthen it, but you can only do so much because your anchors are in moving ground. So you, you're, at best, you can move as a unit, at worst, it can have forces that pull, pull the, pull any wall apart. If you, if and when you drive up there, you'll notice that the piling are 15, 16 feet up in the air. And what Caltrans, their goal is to get rid of a sag, a big dip out there and straighten out the grade. And so they're gonna raise the grade 15 or 16 feet in that sag, smooth it out. And when they do that, they'll move the center of the road up the hill about 15 feet. So it's gonna be a little bit more pleasing alignment. It won't be, you know, the seven mile an hour alignment that we've come to love up there. It might actually be a 25-mile alignment progress. Caltrans, just a month ago, began their second season of borings up there, where they're having, Caltrans boring crews go out and auger down 150 feet and sample everything that's, that they run into. The CTC, the California Transportation Commission, will be meeting in Crescent City early part of November, and it would be an opportunity for the city, the county, to thank them for authorizing $50 million. And, you know, the, the project, you know, we're, we're looking at not getting through the environmental stage until 2026. It's a long lead project. We're not looking, seeing that it can possibly be built short of everything falling in the ocean. If it goes its natural course and is not held up by excessive litigation, we're looking at 2039 for an opening of a road up there. So it's 20 years out. So long time in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
No, the only thing I have is that there's a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Got an agenda and everything.
Yes.
Nice. Thank you. Well, I have nothing, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjournment.
Second? Again? How's that?
They can send item number two to the government.
It got removed, yeah. Thank you, though. All right. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a move? Okay, well then.